Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Township of Abington's Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, March 14th, 2019 to order, and may we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Myers, here.
Here.
Rosskey.
Here.
DePlacido.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Driver.
Here.
Carco.
Here.
Steveland.
Maye.
Here.
Klasty.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Here. Commissioner Drew Rothman is excused. At this time, would everyone please stand for the pleasure of allegiance? The pleasure of allegiance is to the high of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, where we are in our own individual, with liberty taken as our justice ground. At this time, there are no board president announcements, nor are there any presentations, so I'd like to open up the floor at this time for public comment on agenda items. Public comment on items that are on our agenda this evening. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on any agenda items? If not, we'll move right into our consent agenda and our minutes, and I'd like to call on Vice President Stephen Klein for approval of the minutes and the consent agenda.
Thank you, President Luker. Before us, we have our consent agenda, so I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through J, or I, is that an I? That's an L, sorry. A through L, as listed on our agenda, and I so move.
Second.
They're moved to seconded. Any comments from commissioners or staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion counts.
That concludes the consent agenda for this evening.
Thank you, Vice President Stephen Klein. At this time, there is no unfinished business, so we'll move right into new business, and I'd like to call on Commissioner Ken Drosky, Chair of the Administrative Code and Land Use Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we have item A, which is ACL-01-031419, motion approving the subdivision application for a two-lot residential subdivision for property located at 629 Roslin Avenue, Glenside, Pennsylvania, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded. Comments from commissioners? Commissioner, let me see, Vice President Klein and Commissioner Myers.
Commissioner Myers, can you first?
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. After thinking about this, I'm certainly going to vote for the subdivision. I would not hold that up, but I really am not in favor, and for the record, of making people put in sidewalks with a subdivision when it becomes a sidewalk to nowhere. Now, and I understand why it's being asked, however, we might be asking somebody to put a sidewalk in, a sidewalk to nowhere, that will stay that way for many years, and I would much rather see some kind of plan or program where we put the money in escrow so that there can be a plan for the street instead of for a certain amount of years, or whatever the timeframe would be, but I just, I just don't agree with making people put in sidewalks that just in front of their property, which is going to drop off, and then no sidewalk, in the middle of the block, end of the block, whatever it may be. I just need to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Klein.
So, I guess along those lines, I just wanted to make sure that the agenda item has been changed so that there is no sidewalk or curbing waiver being granted. Is that correct?
I believe at the committee meeting that there was...
Yeah, I just want to make sure that's been reflected on the agenda.
There's no waiver of the sidewalk.
That is my understanding, but if you're, if you want to be sure, I would include that in your motion.
So, we can amend the motion?
I would just include that as part of the motion, but I believe it's corrected from the committee meeting.
So, I can reread the motion, if you'd like, with the provision that there is no waiver for the requirement that the applicant install sidewalks.
I think you should amend the motion.
Sure. So, let me amend the motion for ACL-01-031419. This is a motion approving the subdivision application for a two-lot residential subdivision for property located at 629 Roslin Avenue in Glenside, Pennsylvania, and I'd also amend the motion to include that the applicant had requested a waiver of sidewalks, or the requirement to install sidewalks, and that was not approved. The applicant is required to put in sidewalks, so in the affirmative, this motion is intended to include the requirement that sidewalks be installed as a part of the subdivision Latin. That's the understanding, that was the committee understanding, so the motion is amended to include the requirement that sidewalks must be included.
And curbing.
And curbing, correct.
President Luker.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I do have to agree with what Commissioner Myers said, sidewalk to nowhere, but I know which way we're going to head, but I just, for the record, also want to agree with what Commissioner Myers said.
Okay, I did, I don't think I heard a second.
Second.
Motion. Okay, it's been seconded by Commissioner Klein. Any comments from commissioners other than Commissioner Gillespie's comment? Any other comments from commissioners or staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And President Luker, we have one additional item, which although not listed on the agenda this evening, involves a matter concerning the application for the intermunicipal transfer of licenses from the February 14th meeting, I believe, and there is a letter that was received by counsel for the applicant at that point involving the Studio Movie Grill. Do not believe it was assigned an agenda item, but there has been a request by the applicant to have their March 5, 2018, letter read into the record, just to be clarified, and it is a letter by Ellen Freeman, and she has requested that this be read into the evidentiary record for purposes of clarification, and I'm going to call upon Vice President Klein to actually read this into the evidentiary record.
So, I assume it's necessary that we read the whole letter into the record?
Well, you can...
You can paraphrase it and then just admit it as part of the record. I don't know if the entire letter needs to be read in if you want to sort of summarize what is being said. I believe all the board members have a copy of it, so...
Well, then, I'll just read the second paragraph, which is the main gist of the situation, and once again, as Commissioner Brodsky said, this is from Ellen Freeman, and the letter is dated March 5th in reference to the Studio Movie Grill. The second paragraph talks, says, "At this time, at the time of the public hearing, I presented information on the operations and safety policy, which will be put into effect when Studio Movie Grill opens its restaurant and movie theater concept in November 2019 in Abington Township. During my presentation, I represented one of Studio Movie Grill's policy regarding the presence of minors in the movie theaters after 7:00 p.m. I had originally stated that Studio Movie Grill would enforce a policy that if a movie was being shown after 7:00 p.m., any person under the age of 18 who wanted to attend the movie must be accompanied by an adult. Commissioner Stephen Klein asked me to follow-up question, follow-up question regarding that statement, and I confirmed that it was Studio Movie Grill's intention to enforce the policy as stated." And then the third paragraph talks, "After the public hearing, Representative Studio Movie Grill contacted me to clarify the policy in question. Studio Movie Grill policy is that after 7:00 p.m., a person under the age of 18 may not be inside the lounge or bar area without being accompanied by an adult. Please find the attached copy of the floor plan." So, that's, in a sense, the gist of the letter. It's not the movie theaters, it's just the lounge and the bar, so...
Do you need that marked as a, as an exhibit?
No, it'll just be appended to the record from the hearing from February 14th, so, and I think that's what she was asking for, and that's, it'll just be made part of the record.
Do you require any further procedural?
If eight of you believe that this new information would have changed your vote, they would probably be appropriate at this moment to have a, a vote to require the applicant to come back and to reopen the hearing. If all or eight of you don't believe that it would make you change your vote, then we can move on to the next agenda item.
Would you like to poll the jury?
I guess it's a matter of anyone believes, if anyone believes it would have changed their vote, and they want to make a motion that it would change their vote, we could do it that way. If nobody wants to make a motion, we can, we can move on, so...
You heard counsel, does anyone want to make that motion? Hold on, question Commissioner DePlacido.
I don't want to make a motion, but I just want to add, if this is going to be added to the record, the date needs to be changed. The date at the header is March 5th, 2018.
Okay. It would be made part of the record of the February 14th, but the date of her letter is correct, incorrect, you are correct.
Thank you, Commissioner DePlacido.
So, to quick procedural items, one, does the March 5th, 2018, I don't think the date of 2018 matters, I think we can all take notice that it was intended for 2019, if that's okay with, you good with that?
No, I think that's fine.
The second page of the letter is dated correctly, and since this hearing occurred on February 14th, 2019, I think we know she didn't send the letter 11 months early.
So, I'll just present a motion, does this letter, or does this change, or request to change, or clarify the record, change anybody's opinion? I'll make a motion that if anybody changes their opinion, now's your time to state your grounds. Hearing none, I'll make a motion that the evidentiary record be amended to include this letter reflective of the March 5, 2019 date, and I so move.
Okay, so moved to seconded. Any comments from commissioners, staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And I believe that concludes today's, tonight's business for the Administrative Code and Land Use Committee, and I turn this back to your honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brodsky. Well done. I'd like to call on Commissioner Lori Schreiber, Chair of the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. The Public Safety Committee has two items this evening. PS1 is a motion to adopt ordinance number 2164, amending Chapter 156, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Traffic Regulations, Section 14, Stop Intersections, and Article 3, Parking Regulations, Section 25, Parking Prohibited at All Times, No Parking Between Signs, No Parking Here to Corner. To add stop intersections on Lafayette Avenue, Cherokee Avenue, Morden Road, and Keswick Avenue, add no parking here to corner on Keswick Avenue, add no parking on Brown Avenue, all as more fully set forth in your ordinance, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded. Any comments from commissioners, from staff? If there are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
PS2 is a motion to promote Sergeant Sean Williams to the rank of probationary lieutenant effective April 15th, 2019, provided he successfully completes the remaining portions of the promotional process, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any comments from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And that concludes our agenda this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. At this time, Commissioner John Spiegelman, Chair of the Public Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we get to our one formal agenda item, I'm going to turn things over to Vice President Klein for the appointments to the various boards, commissions, and committees, with a note of my gratitude for his work chairing and coordinating the entire interview process.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman, and I think it goes to all those that were involved in the interviews, yourself, Commissioner Vehi, Commissioner Carswell, Commissioners Zepone, Commissioner Thompson, and Commissioner DePlacido, so, and then all the commissioners that watched the interviews that were, when they were taped. So, with that, there's, we have several board, volunteer board committee appointments that need to be made. I guess if it's all right with everybody, I'm going to take each volunteer board and do them as a slate. If there's any objection at the time of reading the nominees, then I guess we can pull them out individually. Is that, if that's all right with you, President Luker?
Yes, sir.
So, with the, we have the Environmental Advisory Council. I would like to have a motion to appoint Cack Evans, Michelle Kazlak, and Andrea Sue.
Second. It's been moved to seconded, that we appoint the names listed by Vice President Stephen Klein. Are there any comments from commissioners or staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
For the library board, I'd like to make a, I'd like to have a motion to appoint Tom Tyler, Jeff Schaefer, and Emily Cooper to the library board.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded. To appoint the names listed by Vice President Klein, any comments from commissioners or staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
For the Human Relations Commission, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Joanne Kleiner.
Second.
It's removed to seconded. Any comments from commissioners to appoint Joanne Kleiner? From staff, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
Then to the Vacancy Property Review Board, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Bob Greaves.
Second.
It's removed to seconded, to appoint Bob Greaves. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And then to the Economic Development Council, I'd like to make an, a motion to appoint Michael McPaul, David Mulvey, Erin Visser to a full member position, and Bob Reich to fill the rest of her, of Erin's alternate, alternate member position on the Economic Development Council.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded. Any comments from commissioners or staff, when the names listed by Vice President Klein? If there are no comments from staff, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
And then one point of order, or one point of information to all the commissioners so that we can try to put out their additional information. The volunteer boards are still light certain positions. The Planning Commission has one position open. The Vacancy Property Review Board still has one position open. The HRC has one position. The library board has one position. The Economic Development Council has one position, and the Shea Tree Commission has one position. Most of these occurred after the initial notices were sent out, so they were not interviewed for at that time, so, and I think we'll work with, with the manager to get out that information to the Board of Commissioners so that we can advertise and get another pool of people to interview, so. And with that, that concludes the volunteer board information.
Thank you. Very well done, Vice President Klein. I'll turn it over, back over to Commissioner John Spiegelman, Chair of the Public Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Vice President Klein. We have one agenda item tonight, that is PA-01-031419, and that is a motion toward the planning, community development, consulting services to Urban Design Ventures LLC for a three-year period. The consultant aid and assistance to the township with the design, planning, and will, implementation of the Township Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs, and I so move.
It's been moved to seconded. Any comments from commissioners?
Just one. I appreciate the notes that we got regarding the lack of bids this, this last time around. I'm kind of hoping that we can get that every time, we're running short on bidders moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Good job, Ben. Any other comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And, Mr. President, that concludes the agenda of the Public Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner John Spiegelman. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Vice President Stephen Klein, Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, President Luker, and I would like to call on Township Treasurer Jay Blumenthal for the treasurer's report this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein. Both of my reports are in your packet. Everything is ahead for the month and for the year-to-date, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Any questions for the treasurer? And with that, I'll move on to, thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
With that, I'll move on to our one agenda item, FC01021919, motion to approve the January expenditures as previously circulated to the board in the amount of $1,634,338.65, and salaries and wages in the amount of $2,289,314.45, and authorizing the proper officials to assign vouchers in payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of April 2019, and I so move.
Second.
It's removed to seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Rosskey.
Yes.
Rossman.
Yes.
Moncrief.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Driver.
Yes.
Carco.
Yes.
Steveland.
Maye.
Klasty.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Yes.
That concludes the Finance Committee's agenda.
Thank you, Vice President Klein. Okay, that concludes the formal agenda for the evening, so at this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment. State your name and address for the record, and please acknowledge our three-minute speaking rule. Your name and address, sir.
Hello. My name is Fran Early.
Make sure that the microphone is on, sir. Is the green light on?
Can you hear me? Yeah. What's on? Hello?
Okay, go ahead.
Fran Early, 356 Central Avenue, North Hills. I moved into Abington with my parents in 1970, into Ward 13. Purchased my first home and moved into Ward 9. Realized the taxes were okay, so we purchased a larger home and moved into Ward 6. In that time, several commissioners represented our interests and concerns. I have witnessed many nameplates changes of commissioners in many wards over the past 39 years, and name changes of the management staff, department staff, and more of a shuffling of the nameplates of the police department. These changes occurred by personnel moving, having the ability to enjoy retirement, and the democratic process of the election system. Through all this, I observed that this township has always governed better than our nation's capital. I feel many residents are not informed or aware of how the township operates. I wanted to contribute to help residents understand the process. As I was thinking of this, I received my tax bill in the mail, along with a newsletter. On one side of the newsletter was the explanation of how the taxes are spent, which is described in simple, layman terms. On the other side is a letter from President Luker. I asked my neighbors in Ward 6 and other wards if they read the newsletter. Too often, I heard, "No." I tossed it out with the envelope. And had this well-written letter copied onto a phone board. "Mr. Manfred, if possible, could you hang this sport on the wall so that residents can read this well-thought-out letter and understand how hard everyone in this room works? And some other residents can take a glance at this poster prior to speaking at this podium and think twice before they speak in a negative tone. I thank you for allowing me to speak."
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Any other comments from residents?
Laura Layman, 1431 Bryant Lane. So, I invited Mr. Early over to my house when he spoke before about all the wonderful things in the township, and I wish I had time also to deal with them, but my time is so short that I barely have any time to work on the things that need to be fixed, that persistently need to be fixed. So, I would extend that invitation again to Mr. Early to come learn about the problems that his neighbors are having, and it's not because many people don't work hard, but there are things that are ignored, and things that should not be ignored, things that have kept residents in absolute danger, and I believe residents are still in danger and are still being ignored. From the simplest things, for instance, I'm going to ask if we can do something about this. It blocks out the view of actually two commissioners from where we sit back there, so I'm hoping we can find a way to either fold it down or something when it's not being used. That's the simplest kind of accommodation. In 13 years, we've not had any accommodation to do anything but sit in that one seat in the corner for our camera, but the large accommodations are things that are absolutely corrupt. I just spent several days putting together an appeal for the records that I should have had for the BET hearing, and they were withheld. I also had the privilege of seeing some other right-to-know requests that were filled, completely inadequate, just a fraction of the documents were there that should have been there. These kinds of processes are the ones that steal from the residents not only money, millions of dollars in the case of the colonade, for instance, and those dollars went into the pockets of some of the people sitting right before me, so, and now we're paying for a whistleblower suit in that, in that particular case. Those things, I mean, we have millions of dollars of money for the $100 million renovation at the school that are unaccounted for. There's no line item in the budget for those. All of those things need to be changed. People can work very, very hard on one thing while ignoring something else that's dangerous or that's just downright wrong, and those things have to be fixed, and I would invite Mr. Early to come work with me and work with you, and I invite all of you. I did send one commissioner a letter tonight. I hope all of you will get that information. I'll make sure that you do, okay? And I would like us to work together to fix those things that are wrong.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other comments from residents? If there are none, we'll start with comments from commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Peggy Myers.
Commissioner, President Luker, I would like to thank you for joining me at a meeting at Willow Hill. I'd like to thank the school administration and especially the parents that attended this meeting, and I hope that this is the beginning of many changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brodsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I don't have any concluding comments for this evening, other than one very brief note. I believe PAL is having an event on April 6th, I believe, at Keswick, and I think it's April 6th or is it April 5th, I believe? 6th, okay, the real diamond show. So, there are, courtesy of an anonymous donor, two tickets to that event being held by Sergeant Roger Gillespie at the Abington Township Police Department, and I encourage those who may have interest in having to attend that show for those two tickets, to contact Sergeant Gillespie, and hopefully they have a good show, and hopefully PAL has a successful event. Having said that, I have no further comment, and I appreciate the courtesy, President Luker, and I turn it back to you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Jimmy DePlacido.
Thank you, President Luker. Just one comment tonight. When driving through Abington Township, please drive like your kids live here. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Stuart Weingrad.
Thank you, President. I've been on this job for one month. I've learned a lot, and I want to thank everybody from the board that's talked to me, that's answered my questions. I want to thank Mr. Manfredi for speaking with me and helping me learn what's going on in this township, and I want to thank the employees of, of the township. I mean, firsthand, I got to see what they do, and I think all the residents here should really appreciate what they do. They're dedicated, they're progressive, they're forward-thinking, and they care, and they're professionals, so, thank you.
Thank you. Very well said. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you. No comments tonight.
Vice President Stephen Klein.
No comment tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners Bowman.
Just at the end of this month, a township employee named Nick Wallace is going to retire from Parks after 40 years at Parks, and there's not going to be any major fanfare, but Nick, he is a good guy, and I've known him since we were young, and he's been a longtime good employee, so have a good retirement, Nick Wallace.
Thank you. Commissioners Zepone.
Thank you. Just a couple things. The first is I'd like to invite the residents of the township to our sixth annual Designer Bag Bingo on April 12th at VFW. Doors open at 6:00. And also, on the 14th of April, we'll be holding our seventh annual Breakfast with the Easter Bunny at the VFW from 9:00 to 12:00. Anybody needs information or tickets can contact me. Now, I just want to read a couple lines here regarding the Edgehill Tyson that came from PennDOT, "To make my residents and other residents that use this corridor aware that Tyson Avenue is scheduled to close between Edgehill and Custer in Abington Township, Montgomery County, beginning at 7:00 a.m. on Monday, March 25th, through late July for drainage work on a project to improve safety and travel on Tyson Avenue, Edgehill Road, Janketown Road, and several adjacent township roads." And this has been put out by PennDOT. Also, during the four-month closure, Tyson Avenue Motorist will be detoured over Edgehill Road and Eastern Road. Local access will be maintained up to the construction zone. And just as a reminder to the residents, that the township's website and my website are the only two official websites to give out information on Tyson and Edgehill. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gillespie.
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone that the Keep the Parade Running run is April 13, and they can go to 5K at glensiparade.com, and they will be able to find a registration that they can do online. And that's April 13. They have to be at the VFW about 7:30. Also, I just want to wish everyone a happy St. Patrick's Day, for those that are Irish and those that would like to be Irish on that day, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vahe.
I echo both of Commissioner Gillespie's comments, but especially the Keep the Parade Running 5K, which is on April 13. Please join my team so I can beat Carol Gillespie's team. Friendly competition, but it's all for good cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Spiegelman.
No comments other than a little bit early. Happy spring, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carswell.
Just one comment. On April 22, a number of environmentally friendly groups are coming together to celebrate Earth Day in Roychester Park in the heart of Ward 10. Festivities will be community service activities and some learning opportunities from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. There'll be more information going out through multiple sources, but if anyone has questions, they can ask me. And again, that's April 22. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schreiber.
Thank you. I want to congratulate the Abington Township Fire Department on its reaccreditation. It is the only, I just want to tell people in the audience here that we are the only fire department that's an all-volunteer fire department in Pennsylvania to, to receive this type of accreditation. So congratulations to everybody involved in that process. Thank you.
Thank you. And closing comments, I noticed, well, last month I made township manager aware of compliments on where the staff was sitting based on the new seating arrangements, and we gave kudos to Commissioner Jimmy DePlacido, but I see we went back to our old ways today. And the staff is sitting where they've been sitting for the last 40 years. But in any event, I liked where they were sitting last time. I thought it was, it added, yes, sir. You want to comment on that?
Well, as we talked back then, you know, the staff is free to sit wherever they like, but I have a roundtable of directors after every committee meeting, and I said, "Well, what'd you guys think of that?" And everyone was so thankful that you recognized that, and I think we're going to make that starting next month. We're going to rearrange that area. So you were the impetus, President Luger, for, for change. And that's, that is going to become permanent.
It really looked very professional. It added a lot to the meeting, but thank you very much for that. And in closing, I just wanted to spend a minute giving special thanks to the Administrative Code and Land Use Department. They dealt with some very challenging issues this past week, especially in my ward, but then I thought about it and said, "No, everybody on staff deals with challenging issues every day in every department." So for the people who you can't see, who are sitting in the back, thank you very much on behalf of all the board of commissioners. So hopefully next time you'll be seated so we can give you proper kudos. But having said that, if there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you for attending. Meeting's adjourned.